All right, everybody, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, would you take role, please?
Mayor Woods.
Here, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Pro Tim Lit.
Here.
Councilmember Marciano.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Additions, deletions, modifications?
No, sir.
All right. So before we move on to announcement and presentation, I want to make sure there's no elephant in the room later. So I would like to move ad for discussion under item 10, items for council action and discussion, the vice mayor position, also filling vacancies to the external boards and committee appointments. Can I get a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's? Announcement and presentations? Joanne? Nope?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Good evening.
My name is Natalie Crowley. I'm the Director of Planning and Zoning, and I am very pleased to be here with you all and with this entire team to be able to present one consolidated presentation on the three agenda items that are on your agenda for later on this evening for action. Those are Resolution 63, 64, and 60...63, 64, and 66. And although they are technically separate programs and separate resolutions, they all have one common denominator, and that is that they all relate to housing. And all of these wonderful programs provide a very good public service that we intend to offer and go into more detail. Joining us this evening is Mr. Bob Gray from Strategic Planning Group, who the city hired as a consultant to develop our workforce housing program. Bob, in working with several staff members, helped to develop the baseline data, the needs assessment, and really helped formulate recommendations, which then gave the staff the ability to be able to refine those recommendations and include them as well in the report, which we will present later on in our presentation. I would also like to acknowledge Ms. Kimberly Spence from the Florida Housing Coalition, who helped prepare our CDBG HUD Consolidated Plan and Action Plan, and she is listening in. Several staff members have worked very hard on this program, but Olivia Ellison and Joanne Scoria have by far put the most time in on this. And before I turn it over to Joanne, I just want to acknowledge their amazing work on these programs. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joanne, who is going to do the presentation. Thank you.
Hi, Joanne.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. Just take a minute to pull up my presentation. Okay. It is my honor to present the city's various housing initiatives tonight. There is a lot of information in my presentation to help facilitate the discussion. I have organized my presentation into three sections. The first section will cover the city's workforce housing study and staff report. The next section of the presentation will address the city's allocation of CARES Act funding. And the final portion of my presentation will give a quick overview of our CDBG five-year plan, which is due for renewal this year. So jumping right into workforce housing, and to give a brief overview of this portion of the presentation, we're going to go over what is workforce housing, who needs workforce housing, the consultant's work, and potential solutions for the city of Palm Beach Gardens. Workforce housing is for households ranging in income from 60% to 140% AMI. For reference, Palm Beach County's AMI is estimated at $79,100, and the city's AMI is estimated at eighty...just over $81,000. This can include employees in sectors such as teaching, healthcare, retail, many of the services that we find here in the city. We all know that workforce has been widely...workforce housing has been widely discussed by all sectors of the society and the economy, including our own local Chamber of Commerce, who identified housing options as one of the key strategies in their 2017 strategic plan as part of a local thriving economy. Being aware of all of these discussions, staff hired a consultant to analyze our local community demographic and statistical data and identify if there is a need. This report was completed in February and is attached to the agenda for tonight's meeting. Our consultant, Bob Gray, is available to answer any questions on the details of the report. But what I would like to emphasize is the report included an extensive amount of data from a variety of sources, including the United States Census, American Community Survey, MLS, REIS, Board of Realtors...take...um...as well as our local rental market. And what he identified is that there is a significant amount of housing cost burden in the city of Palm Beach Gardens, which means that a significant percentage of households are paying more than 30% of their income towards housing purposes. And additionally, there is a significant gap in which those households, what they can afford to pay, and the available prices for rentals, as well as single-family homes in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. While the consultant was working on the study and the report, staff also looked at what is necessary to have successful workforce housing in the city. And I would like to share that workforce housing cannot exist in a vacuum. It needs to be located in the city's urban core. Housing should be located where it makes sense, near employment opportunities and key ancillary services, such as employment opportunities, government offices, professional offices, retail services, transportation, parks, medical offices, and schools, public and private at all levels. The city and other agencies, such as the DMV and library, county library system, all provide support services to workforce-level households in the form of senior, youth, and other services. This leads us to our potential solutions. I do want to emphasize here that our consultant guided staff toward several, a variety of solutions, but staff really took a comprehensive and close look at all the recommendations and provided a detailed analysis of what makes sense and what could work here in our city of Palm Beach Gardens. So on this slide, you'll see a little toolkit of all the solutions analyzed, and a little key highlighting all of staff's recommendations in a color-coded system of red, yellow, and green. So the first solution that staff analyzed is a non-residential intensity bonus, and this is essentially an incentive-based program where a developer could pay and contribute to workforce housing in exchange for additional square footage toward this project. Analysis would be completed to ensure compatibility with the local area. For example, the city's new TOD overlay district recommends increasing density within the TOD area, and we could look at something similar citywide for the purposes of workforce housing. This is a solution that is recommended by staff as it is an incentive-based program. This is an example of what an intensity bonus could look like in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. A residential density bonus is a similar sort of program where a developer could receive additional housing units in their project if they agree to integrate workforce housing into the project. Staff recommends including this incentive-based program into the city's workforce housing program. Another example of this would be our new TOD overlay, which allows a bonus of six dwelling units per acre within a half-mile of the future train station. And this is a voluntary program, so staff recommends it. An example of this would be the recent Solera project, which was approved and is currently under construction. They successfully integrated 14 workforce housing units into their project voluntarily, and I want to share an image of what that project will look like upon completion. The city is anticipating receiving monetary donations from the Arcadia Gardens developers, as well as the Avenir developers, within one year. So staff recommends including a housing trust fund as part of our city's workforce housing program as a tool for earmarking funds for certain purposes, such as workforce housing. The city can authorize creation of a fund to deposit this revenue and adopt an ordinance with guidelines and restrictions on how these funds can and should be used, and this recommended by staff. Impact fee waivers or credits. This is one of the solutions that was presented in our consultant's report. Impact fees for projects can really add up. If you look at this example on the screen, for a hypothetical 100-unit multifamily building, the impact fees total over $1.2 million. These types of fees cannot typically be waived, but Florida statutes do permit a waiver of impact fees for workforce housing projects. These waivers or credits can be reviewed in consultation with the DRC to ensure that our level of services are maintained, and staff recommends including this solution within the city's program. Building permit fees is another area where a similar concept could be applied. These fees could be waived or credited to incentivize the provision of workforce housing, and staff recommends including this type of program into the city's workforce housing program. Expedited permitting. This is a program or potential solution where the construction and delivery of workforce housing can be expedited and save the developer valuable time. And this program is existing in our code and would require a simple LDR amendment to include workforce housing projects. So staff recommends expedited permitting as part of the city's workforce housing program. Accessory dwelling units, which are often referred to as ADUs, are separately functioning units on single-family lots and are another tool that can allow for more housing opportunities and also help owners, such as retirees or first-time homebuyers, with additional income source while providing additional housing opportunities in the city. This is recommended by staff to be included in the city's workforce housing program in certain communities where there are larger lots that can comfortably accommodate an additional unit on the lot. The Community Contribution Tax Credit Program is a state program where a sales tax credit is provided to local businesses for contributions to local housing initiatives. The city's role would be to submit an application to the state, and then the opportunity is available for local businesses to contribute. This is recommended by staff as it can be managed and administered by a local nonprofit partner, such as Neighborhood Renaissance. Staff has had preliminary meetings with this organization, and they have expressed interest in managing this program for the city. And so staff recommends including the Community Contribution Tax Credit Program in our workforce housing program. Down payment assistance and rental moving assistance is a solution where one-time grants could be provided to workforce-level households and individuals to assist with those big-ticket initial moving costs to a unit that would otherwise be affordable, such as down payment or first-last and security for a rental unit. This is recommended to be explored in the future, once the city has the opportunity for funds to accrue in the workforce housing trust fund. Single-family rehabilitation is a program that the city currently has available for low- and moderate-income households through the Community Development Block Grant Program. But workforce-level households cannot currently benefit from this opportunity and are significantly burdened with the big-ticket home repairs of roofs, windows, and doors. These are really great programs that can really make a huge difference in the lives of families in our city. So staff recommends including this program for workforce-level households in the future, once the city has the opportunity to collect funds that can be allocated towards this type of program. Multifamily rehabilitation is a similar concept where funds could be allocated to rehabilitate multifamily communities in the main corridors of the city's core along Military Trail, potentially, or Burns Road. It could include re-roofing, replacement of windows or exterior doors. There is an extra level of coordination between multiple residents, additional income eligibility verification, and additional resources needed for construction management. But this is a project that could be potentially funded with our workforce housing trust fund. Staff recommends this be included and explored in the future, once funds are deposited and have an opportunity to accrue in the first phase of implementation. Some of the potential communities that can benefit from multifamily rehabilitation include Trails and Villas, Gardens Villas, Sable Ridge, and Manson Condos. Public-private partnerships and corporate grants. Staff does recommend including the opportunity for these types of programs in the city's workforce housing program. This is highly dependent on what programs are available in the private sector, but it's good to have the opportunity and option available should the opportunity to partner arise. Linkage fees. These are often viewed as a go-to solution for workforce housing or affordable housing, and this is essentially when a formula is used to collect fees from all development projects to put towards workforce housing. And our consultant study has completed the entire methodology to complete a linkage fee program if the city chooses to move forward with that. And many municipalities have adopted a linkage fee. However, this is viewed by the development community as a tax or an additional impact fee, perhaps. So staff does not recommend including this type of program in the city's workforce housing program. It does not...it's not consistent with the business-friendly development climate that the city strives to maintain, which is very essential to maintaining a low and stable tax rate and a high level of service. And it does not fit in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. Inclusionary zoning is another common policy that's used to require a certain percentage of workforce housing units in all housing projects in the city. For example, Palm Beach County requires all development over 10 dwelling units to provide 10% of affordable housing. However, one size does not fit all, and for certain projects, the associated cost of homeownership, which include property taxes, HOA dues, insurance costs, and property maintenance, make homes cost prohibitive for a workforce-level household. There is also a question of effectiveness if a payment-in-lie option is overutilized. Therefore, an inclusionary zoning program is not recommended by staff for inclusion at this time. Manufactured housing, as also referred for modular homes, are another potential solution that has been utilized in certain cities to provide more affordable options or workforce-level options. We've all seen pictures of tiny homes and container homes. However, in South Florida, where the climate includes harsh weather conditions, these units that are more temporary in nature are particularly vulnerable to damage from hurricanes, tornadoes, and other events. So these are not recommended for inclusion as part of the city's housing stock and workforce housing program. The State Housing Initiative Program, or SHIP as often called, is a program that provides direct assistance to municipalities towards housing programs. It's also known as the Sadowski Fund, and it can be used for many purposes, such as down payment assistance, construction, federal match purposes for other types of projects. However, it does have very specific administrative requirements. It requires the creation of a 12-member board with a very specific composition, certain planning documents that must be created and updated, and routine reporting. There are also additional set-aside requirements of how the funds may be used. 65% of the funds must go toward homeownership activities. 75% of the funds must go toward construction activities. 30% towards very-low-income households. 30% towards low-income households. And no more than 10% of funds can be used toward administrative costs. So due to the significant administrative requirements and the demographics that we all know in the city, certain requirements may not be able to be met for this program, and staff does not recommend application to SHIP at this time. A community land trust is a nonprofit organization that acquires land and develops housing sold below market rates because the land is owned in perpetuity by a CLT. There are typically resale restrictions associated with land in a CLT, but these are tools that are typically utilized in larger cities or on a county basis, and there is a community land trust of Palm Beach County. So establish of our own city community land trust would be a duplication of efforts at this time. So staff does not recommend establishing a community land trust for the city. And so bringing back up the workforce housing toolkit that we explored tonight very quickly, and we have eight programs that staff does recommend, including in the city's workforce housing program, four programs that we would like to see included in the future, once we have funds to allocate towards those types of programs, and five programs that are not seen as a good fit and not recommended to be included in the city's workforce housing program. And that completes the workforce housing section of the presentation, if there are any questions or discussion on that.
I don't think so. No discussion on this so far?
I can move on?
Per, please, yeah, thank you.
Okay. So the next section has to do with the city's allocation of CARES Act funding. As the city was finalizing the workforce housing report in February, very shortly after the coronavirus pandemic began and had unprecedented impacts to international, local, and our economy, as well as employment and housing issues. So as we all know, there has been significant impacts in the community, and staff was also notified that we would be receiving $482,975 of CARES Act funding through our participation of the CDBG program. These funds may only be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus. So staff looked at the eligible activities and published a needs assessment survey in September, and we received an overwhelming response, 254 responses, of which 150 were actually low-to-moderate-income residents that would be eligible for assistance through CARES. So we looked at the survey results, and I'm highlighting a few of the highlights of the responses. As far as employment impacts, 63% of the respondents indicated their income had been impacted by COVID-19. That's a very high number. 55% of the respondents indicated they were able to make last month's rent or mortgage payment on time. However, the next question about confidence for next month's mortgage or rent payment, that extremely confident number is very low. Only 25% felt confident they could make next month's rent or mortgage payment on time. The majority, over 50%, were only somewhat confident, not at all confident, or not current. So staff's proposed project for the coronavirus CARES Act funding is a rent and mortgage assistance program. Staff is planning to hire a consultant to complete the eligibility and manage the program. Through the CDBG program administration provisions, 20% of the funds can be used towards hiring a consultant and towards administrative purposes, so we can hire a consultant to manage this program. We anticipate a $10,000 maximum of assistance and approximately 40 households that can be assisted. There are some specific program considerations. All typical HUD regulations must be complied with. In addition to all the normal HUD regulations, payments must be made directly to landlords or mortgage holders for rent or mortgage assistance. There's no direct payments to any applicants, and applicants have...must also be vetted to ensure there is no duplication of assistance. But we feel this program is very complimentary to the workforce housing program, and so staff recommends a mortgage and rent assistance program. This is a public hearing item, and later in the agenda, there's a public hearing, and this hearing has been publicly noticed and is in accordance with the city's adopted citizen participation plan. And then that concludes my CARES Act funding portion of the presentation, and I'll move on if that's okay. Okay. So the last section of the presentation is our CDBG five-year plan, which was prepared in consultation with Florida Housing Coalition. And so 2015 is the first year that the city was an entitlement grantee with US HUD. We reached that threshold of 50,000 residents. And in 2015, the strategy that was outlined was single-family home rehabilitation with a goal of 35 homes over the course of five years. We've completed 18 homes. We have nine applications in progress, and we have enough funds to assist about seven more applicants if...once we get those applications. So this program can continue for a short while longer, and then I would like to share some of our success stories of some of the homes we've been able to rehabilitate. This homeowner received a new roof. This homeowner received new windows and paint. And this homeowner had an unfinished addition on their home, and we were able to apply stucco and bring that addition up to Florida building code, in addition to the replacement of windows. So for 2020, our five-year consolidated plan is up for renewal, and we engaged Florida Housing Coalition to develop the five-year plan, the associated analysis of impediments to fair housing, and the one-year action plan. And we completed a survey and a public input meeting on August 12th that our consultant helped facilitate, as required by HUD as you renew this plan. And I'd like to share the survey results very quickly. We asked questions in all the areas of CDBG eligible activities, which include housing, homeless needs, employment, public services, and public facilities. And I'm not going to read all the data on the screen, but if you look at this high-need column, the responses are kind of all over the place until you get to the category of public facilities. And then there is a pretty big consensus that public infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, water and sewer, is rated as a high need. So staff looked at what potential projects could be done in this area. As far as available resources, we're looking at receiving $1.18 million over the course of five years. And public infrastructure projects are typically considered an area-benefit project, and they can only be included in areas that are primarily residential and the city, because our income levels are slightly higher than Palm Beach County on a whole. We are able to qualify low-to-moderate census tracts and blocks that are over 40.3% residents that are low-to-moderate income. Typically, that threshold is 51%. So our proposed project, for an infrastructure project, is a water and sewer project from Mary Circle and Dania Drive. They were annexed in 1999, 2002, and they currently have well-water and septic systems. However, these lots are too small to meet health department standards for the separation between these two systems. So we have a preliminary estimate of the project cost for these water lines. $856,000, a little over $856,000, would be utilized from CDBG funding. There are some roadway and connection fees that would be from other sources, including gas tax funding and from the property owners, for a project total of about $1.2 million. There is a process for utilizing the funds upfront, so we can deliver the water at a faster timeframe, rather than waiting over the course of five years to receive the funds. And we've initiated the process of getting this approval with our local field office. And so our CDBG five-year consolidated plan goals include improving access to public infrastructure. We will still have the opportunity to do single-family rehab and future action plans. We also have the opportunity to provide public services if necessary, and the program administration is always included as a goal. And our 2020 action plan includes the Mary Circle and Dania Drive waterline project. This consolidated plan is also required to be publicly noticed and requires a public hearing, and that has been published in accordance with the citizen participation plan. And so to summarize, we've covered the workforce housing study, the CARES Act funding, and our CDBG five-year consolidated plan. And to summarize the actions that are on the agenda tonight, Resolution 66 is on the public hearing agenda, and staff recommends approval of Resolution 66 for the workforce housing program study by Strategic Planning Group and the associated staff report with staff's official recommendations for strategies to be included. Next steps for this program would include developing comprehensive plan text amendments, land development regulation text amendments, and necessary SOPs for the various solutions to lay out the specific parameters for these programs to be implemented. For the CDBG CARES Act funding, Resolution 64 for a substantial amendment to our 2019 annual action plan to incorporate CARES Act funding is also on the public hearing agenda, and staff recommends approval for a rent and mortgage assistance program. And finally, Resolution 63, adopting the city's five-year consolidated plan, analysis of impediments, and year-one action plan for an infrastructure project on Mary Circle and Dania Drive is also on the public hearing agenda, and staff recommends approval authorizing submission to HUD. And then I would like to close by saying thank you for all of your time. I know it was a long presentation. I would like to thank our consultants for their hard work, as well as Olivia Ellison, Don Sonniborn, Assistant Director Peter Hoffeins, and Natalie Crowley for all of their hard work and many hours that went into this coordinated effort on all of these projects. Thank you.
Joanne, excellent job. Thank you, Natalie. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Want to wait until...
Are we going to do questions?
Yeah, then we got to vote on those separately. So we'll move on to comments from the public. I do have two cards, Steve and Jack. Jack, I'll call you up first, if you can come up to the podium. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Jack Weir, 5604 PGA Boulevard, Palm Beach Gardens. I'm here to commend the staff on the report. We have...I have two hats that I wear. One is the developer, the Solera, at City Center Development, that was referenced in the presentation. The other is this year, I'm chairman of the Housing Leadership Council, Palm Beach County, which is designed to promote workforce housing. So we fully support the staff recommendations. We urge your approval. There are a number of very good suggestions in here, and actually, they're measures that we think the county would be well-advised to adopt. So I think you're on the right track. I think it's a good step forward, and commend you for the effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Mr. Matheson?
Yes, sir.
Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Mayor Woods, members of the council, good evening. I'm Steve Matheson. My address is 121 Emerald Key Lane, Palm Beach Gardens. I'm here tonight, first in my capacity, as the economic chair of the PGA Corridor Association. The Corridor Association has, throughout the entire process, supported the adoption of the TOD ordinance you're going to be considering tonight, which we believe, and we've said before, and we've put in writing, is the future of our city. We commend the vision that you're showing, and we think that this is the best possible and we think that this is the best possible step the city could take for its next step for this next twenty, thirty, forty years. We highly commend that forward-looking vision. As Jack had just said, um, the resolutions which you have just reviewed and which Joanne has gone through with great detail, sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-six, all relate to the health, the welfare of our citizens and create what I believe and what the Corridor Association believes is a good foundation for workforce housing, for a strong, uh, base in order to have essential service housing and to provide the type of housing that not only serves those residents, but also creates for all of us a healthy environment. It makes our business community stronger. It helps our whole community become stronger. And we greatly applaud and we support that initiative. Finally, um, and, and for fun, actually, uh, we're having our annual reception this year. We've decided to hold it at the beautiful new tennis center that the city has opened. So as a member and a board member of the PGA Corridor Association, I would like to invite you all, as well as staff, to attend. If you would like to come, it's on the nineteenth of November at 6:00 PM. It's socially distanced, will be outside on the veranda. It'll be catered by Salute Cafe, and we hope you can come and join us. We greatly appreciate it.
Thursday.
Thursday.
So Thursday.
We'll be there.
Thank you much.
Thank you, guys. City manager report, Ron?
Uh, just two announcements, uh, to let everyone know. We had the mayor's veterans' golf tournament scheduled for this Saturday due to the uncertainty of the weather forecast due to the event that we're all aware of that's headed this way, or maybe not, who knows? We have rescheduled the mayor's, uh, veterans' golf tournament to Saturday, November 21. Also, Veterans Day, let's not forget, is Wednesday, this Wednesday coming, uh, November the 11th. Unfortunately, because of, you know, our pandemic situation and the COVID issue, we're not having a ceremony this year. Uh, also, I want to let you know City Hall will be closed on that day. That's a city holiday that be observed. Okay, that's my two announcements. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Typical 2020. All right. Next is the consent, consent agenda. I'm sorry. Can I get a motion and second to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. I almost said five. So weird, Maria. It's her, it's her fault. All right. All right, so we got some public hearings and we have quasi-judicial. So tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following cases. Resolution 62, 2020, site plan amendment for the Gardens East Plan Community Development, PCD. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at this, at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The city council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after staff and the applicant or other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out the comment card and give it to the city clerk over here to the left. The city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend or, and to intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these, these cases, which is just one.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Ordinance 10, 2020. Patty, would you please read the title?
Ordinance 10, 2020, An Ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Approving City-Initiated Text Amendments to the Future Land Use Element of the City's Comprehensive Plan to Incorporate a Transit-Oriented Development TOD Objective and TOD Policies Based on the Recommendations Included in the City's TOD Master Plan, Prepared by the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, Provided for Transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, Providing a Conflicts Clause, a Severability Clause, and Authority to Codify, Providing an Effective Date and Further Purposes. Note to the Public, There is a sign-in sheet at the front table for anyone wanting additional information from the Department of Economic Opportunity.
All right, we're going to open the hearing. Has anything changed since the first hearing?
Mr. Mayor, nothing has changed in the text, and city staff received correspondence from DEO indicating that they had no comment on the proposed amendment. Staff continues to recommend approval. We are very happy to be here at this milestone, which is a, a very important milestone for the city for adoption of this TOD, and they're, uh, we're happy to entertain any questions.
Right.
We're more than happy to do a presentation if you wish. We're available, but there's been no changes.
I'm assuming nobody needs another presentation? Rochelle, you okay? Okay. I don't think anybody wishes to speak on this item. Closing the hearing, can I get a motion and second to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 10, 2020.
I would love to second that.
All right. I'm assuming there's no discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Ordinance 11, 2020. Patty, did you read the title?
Ordinance 11, 2020, An Ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Amending the City of Palm Beach Gardens Budget for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2019, and Ending September 30, 2020, Inclusive Providing a Conflicts Clause, a Severability Clause, and Authority to Codify, Providing an Effective Date and Further Purposes.
All right, staff presentation, Mr. Owens, thank you.
Yes, um, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Alan Owens with the Finance Department. I do have a very brief presentation on ordinance 11, 2020, which is a budget amendment for fiscal year ending 9/30 of 2020, the year that just ended. Brief background, um, a lot of these things we discussed during the preparation of the 2021 budget. And we're addressing those items with this first reading tonight. An additional couple of items that we'll talk about. But first of all, as you all know, we had COVID-19 revenue impacts. We need to clean up some of the, uh, negative variances in some of those revenues. We also had some positive, uh, variances in building permits and federal grant revenues. We also had the, uh, which we talked about also this item, the, uh, additional adjustment transfer to the Recreation Special Revenue Fund to offset revenue losses incurred by that fund due to COVID-19. And then a couple of other items that we'll talk about, uh, one being the, uh, variance due in the road impact, the city road impact fee fund after we had implemented the mobility fee fund earlier this year. And then some minor cleanup, some capital lease purchases just to, uh, basically get our budget to align with our financial statements due to some accounting entries that we have to post each year. So we'll just jump right into each of these items. First item, as I mentioned, we had some very good news with building permit revenues. Last year, we had a positive variance of about 2.9 million in federal grants due to reimbursements from FEMA, uh, positive variance of about 1.7 million. The transfer to the Recreation Fund is about 2.5 million. That covers the, uh, COVID-19, uh, revenue losses in fiscal year 2020. We also did a projection based on current, um, operational levels of what we anticipate we will need for the first three months of the current fiscal year. So, uh, the total is about 2.5 million that we're recommending to transfer from the, uh, general fund to the Recreation Fund. Then also the state fees, uh, the variances in those revenues due to COVID. Last year was about $735,000, and you can see before you the breakdown between the electric franchise and the state revenue, sale tax, communication tax, and revenue sharing. Okay, in addition to that, as I mentioned, uh, the road impact fee fund that was, um, impacted be, because of the establishment of the Mobility Fund. When we first prepared the fiscal year 2020 budget, Mobility Fund had not been finalized at that time. So if you recall, earlier this year, when that fund was established, we brought an amendment to council to establish that fund. We did an initial estimate of $2 million in that fund's revenue, knowing that we could come back in the, uh, city road impact fee and clean that up, uh, later in the year. And that's what we're doing now. And as it turns out, the $2 million is the number that we need to, uh, reduce our city impact, road impact fees by. And, uh, in addition to that, we, we did the analysis of all the projects and where they land and where the funding is going to come from. There's about a $200,000 transfer that we need to make from the general fund to cover, um, all of the impact, the, uh, road impact fee funds that are currently on the books to fully fund those. And the last item is the, again, it's just a very minor housekeeping thing, recording $705,000 in capital lease transactions. During the year, we had a fire rescue equipment, uh, and a public facilities equipment lease purchase arrangement. For budgeting purposes, we budgeted debt payments on an annual basis, on a cash basis. But, uh, for accounting purposes, on the financial statements, we have to show the full amount. At the end of the year, we show the fire rescue equipment capital as if we purchased it, uh, during the year, and then we show an offsetting, uh, revenue item. So this is just a cleanup. There's no impact on a reserve balance at all. Just some other, one other thing, very important item to note that this isn't a final accounting of fiscal year 2020. We're currently under the, uh, closeout of the last fiscal year, and we will be bringing to council, uh, within the next few months, the typical end-of-year amendment where we carry forward open purchase orders and also our unfinished projects, CIP projects. And mainly, the, uh, very important is adjust our beginning fund balances to agree with our ending audited fund balances. So that, that's in process. We're working on that, uh, that right now. We're closing out the books, getting ready for auditors to come in in January. That's it. It's just a very simple cleanup amendment. If you have any questions, staff does recommend approval, ordinance 11, 2020. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, so I do not have any comments cards on this, so I'm going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion and second to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve budget as amended.
There, a second.
Okay, um, we know this is housecleaning, so I'm going to assume there's no discussion on this.
My only comment, and then you clarified it for me at the agenda review. I just want to make sure I remember. So we, we now have two separate transportation and mobility, uh, fees.
Well, we have, we have the, the existing, the old city road impact fund, and then we have the newly created, uh, mobility fee fund.
So everything east of the B-line goes into mobility.
We have two separate buckets of money. We, where we account for, uh, receipts, whether the project falls within or outside of the mobility, uh, district area. So, yeah, we have two, two separate accounts to track the monies for each area.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say it's about time we got some of that reimbursement money from FEMA from, from 2005.
Oh, yeah, that was, yeah.
That was nice to be able to add back to help offset. So thanks for your persistence in getting that money.
Thanks to, thanks a lot to Max and his, uh, very colorful letters that he helped write.
Fifteen years?
Well, they, they, they did all the legwork. All I had to do was put a little heat to it. But they, they, Alan, Alan and Gracie did all the heavy lifting.
And that was, that was a half a million dollars, too. It was not a small amount that you chose after for fifteen years.
We prevailed. I'm sure heat is the appropriate word for your letter. Probably more like stinging lava flow or something. All right, let's move on from this. So let's vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, or ordinance carries four zero. All right, so Max, you're up. So, um, ordinance 12, 2020. Patty, did you read the title, please?
Ordinance 12, 2020, An Ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Amending Chapter Six, Alcoholics Beverages at Section Six dash two, Hours of Sale, in order to expand the hours of sale, providing a Conflicts Clause, a Severability Clause, and Authority to Codify, Providing an Effective Date and Further Purposes.
All right, so I'm going to open the hearing. Max, do we, can we go over this real quick?
Sure, as you recall from previous meeting, you directed me by consensus to draft an ordinance that would change the hours of sale, um, alcohol, just starting from eight o'clock to 7:00 AM. And that's all this does. You'll notice in the ordinance, there are two, there are two numbers. Eight AM is lined out, and seven AM is added in its place. And that's all it does. That's what you directed me to do, and that's what it does. This brings us in line with the, uh, beginning hours of alcohol sale with all of their surrounding communities and unincorporated county.
Good enough. No cards on this. Close the hearing. I got a motion and second to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Um, any discussion on this?
No, I'm good.
Well, I was, I'm going to say it anyway. I was in favor of bringing it to two. We're, we're going to be the only community that, that sells alcohol till three now. But we did check with the police. There's no statistics between two and three. I'm fine there. And then I did learn that we do have a couple of businesses that are open and considering that we still need to support and promote our businesses. If I'm good with just, you know, appeasing the fishing community, so when they can get out earlier, they can get their supplies and go, which is all this was ever about. So, um...
And now we're in line with county. We're in line with every municipality around us as well.
Except for Toquesta, I don't think you can buy beer there after 7:30 PM.
And if going forward in the future, our police department feels that, uh, we need to cut it back, we can always revisit it and pull it back if...
This time's not the time to change that. So, yeah, chief, if something happens. There you go. All right. So, um, hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Max, when does that come into effect? Tomorrow morning?
Second meeting.
So I got...
It will, it will take effect, um, after our next meeting.
All my fishing buddies are already texting me, "Hey, I'm going out at six."
Yeah, and I'll have to wait till Friday after our first meeting.
All right. Resolution 62, 2020. Patty, read the title, please.
Resolution 62, 2020, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Approving a Site Plan Amendment to Approve an Additional Drive-Thru Lane with the Menu Board Sign and to Approve Modifications to the Site's Landscaping and Parking Lot for McDonald's Restaurant Within the Gardens East Plaza Plan Unit Development, PUD, also known as Promenade Plaza. The subject parcel is a 0.98 acre site and is part of the Gardens East Plan Community Development, PCD, which is generally located east of alternate A1A on the north side of Lighthouse Drive, as more particularly described herein, providing, providing waivers, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date and further purposes.
All right, so I'm going to open the hearing and declare ex parte's other than staff presentation. I've got zero, no phone calls from the community, no phone calls from anybody, uh, any petitioner. So that's my end of it. What do you guys?
I drove through. That's about it.
Got a burger?
No, none.
Okay. Petitioner presentation, sir, have you been sworn in?
Uh, yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Duane Dickerson, on behalf of the applicant. I'm an attorney with the law firm, the name is Conbakman. Offices at 14 Southeast Fourth Street in Boca Raton, Florida. So the subject property is located on A1A. It's on the east side of A1A. It's currently in the city's, uh, commercial future land use. It also has a commercial zoning district. It's also located in the Promenade Plaza, PUD. I believe you all are familiar with this site. The purpose of our request is to allow for a site plan modification to provide dual drive-through lanes at this facility. Obviously, to enhance service, and as you all are aware, during a COVID-19 scenario, we've had a significant uptake in our drive-through business. So, uh, we think this is, is, is much needed. This site was developed in about 2002. So it's, it's time for some, for some upgrades. If you can see here, I believe you all are mostly aware of the site. There's no direct access from A1A. Access is from internals of the shopping center. So as the drive-through sits today, it's pretty easy to access from almost all angles, and that can cause confusion and circulation issues at, at certain peak times. So this is the overlay. What we're proposing to do is channelize the drive-through quite a bit, also to modify the, uh, parking area to allow for one-way traffic. So you have a very, um, strategic traffic flow pattern that doesn't allow traffic to enter the drive-through from any way except from a unified stack. Additionally, the dual, the dual drive-through allows for the efficiency. We want to add two menu boards. Your code allows one, so we're asking for a waiver for two. As you can imagine, in today's world, you have two times opportunities to get there. Now, uh, Max, when I'm behind Max in the drive-through, he orders chick, chicken nuggets, then he changes his mind and he wants the McRib. And so you can get in the other drive-through lane and go ahead and get your order and get out the way. So this will, this will accommodate a, a much faster and more efficient...
How do you know that menu so well? McRib, McNuggets.
I'm, I'm, to, to, to tell myself, I'm like Max. I'm like Max. I'll show up and act like I've never been to McDonald's before and, and... I'll show up and act like I've never been to McDonald's before and then try to figure out what I want to eat. So, so this will give you a, a second opportunity to get out of way from, from those folks like Max and I. And the second, the, the second waiver is, is to reduce the parking by two spaces. The code requires 40 spaces. We're requesting 38 in order to accommodate the, the, the one-way drive-through in certain areas, and we modified the parking to 45 degree here, and we removed a parking space here to accommodate the one-way, the circulation, and the dual drive-through, so that we had to reduce the parking spaces. We are providing 38, and I'll tell you very quickly in another slide, we did do a parking study, and we're well above what's required. Very quickly, there were so many upgrades to the site. I'm not going to list them all. I know we want to be brief, but we were able to add additional sidewalks to improve pedestrian connectivity. We increased the landscaping approximately 30% above what your code requires. We're doing significant engineering improvements to the drainage system on site, cleaning out all the pipes and making sure it drains properly and doesn't, doesn't retain water or anything like that. We're adding benches. There's existing trellis features, but they're not functional because there's no benches. There's no, you know, nothing to add you to want to use them. So we're adding benches to accommodate effective use. We're adding electrical vehicle charging stations on the site, and, and on and on and on. So I'm sure you've talked to your staff about it, and everybody's very pleased with the upgrades for the site. This is the landscape plan. I'm no landscape architect, but what I do know is, when you look at a landscape plan, you want to see a lot of circles, and those circles mean trees, and those circles mean ground cover and, and all the significant landscaping. So you can see there, as I said earlier, we're approximately 30% above what your code would require with the landscape plan. These are the architectural rendings of the site. At top is the west, so that's the front side if you're on A1A looking into the site, and the south side down at the bottom. Top is the east side, and then, and then the north side down at the bottom. This is our, our building color scheme. I, I know the city's very particular about making sure that colors are compatible with adjacent properties and that they fit with the, with the theme and the character of the city, and we were able to make sure that that takes place with this, with this development. And of course, pretty pictures tell a thousand words. As you can see in this area right here on the right side, you see the benches that we're adding to activate these trellises and, as well as the trash facilities and receptacles to make sure that, you know, we don't have any issues with that. So that should be very good. Significant landscaping, once again, to make sure that the site is, looks very, very nice. And this is site, if you're looking in the shopping center, looking back east towards the, towards the facility, you can see all of the significant landscaping. Like I said earlier, we did prepare a parking study to make sure that the 38 spaces that we were providing were sufficient. The demand study said at the peak time, 36 is required. That was our private traffic engineer that did that. We also did have your traffic engineer review all of the data, and they did approve the methodology and the findings in the study as well. So we do have a surplus of parking on the peak demand, even with the waiver. And as you're aware, staff is fully supporting this development. We also had a, a very good meeting with your PZAP board, and they unanimously approved this as well. So we're very excited to be in, in the city with this upgrade. We think it's going to be awesome. We think we're ready for whatever challenges may come in the future with COVID-19 with these upgrades. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dwayne. Matthew?
I don't, I don't think staff has any additional presentation at this point in time.
Yeah, he's.
We're, we're happy to answer any questions, but the, the application and the presentation's already been presented to council in our meetings.
Right.
We do appreciate the applicant working with us through this process. We really appreciate all of the work that you all have done. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Dwayne, stand by one minute, Dwayne.
Yes, sir.
Want to close the hearing? Can I get a motion and second to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 62-2020.
I'll second.
Discussion questions?
I'll just make a comment that when you can get efficiency, safety, and something that makes the area look a whole heck of a lot better, which is what that area needs right now, it's, it's a win-win-win, plus the sustainability component, adding the charging stations add another win to that, too. So thanks for working with staff on that.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I just, I would be remiss if I didn't thank staff as well. Natalie, Matthew, Peter, they've been phenomenal through this project, and it's, it really makes it easy tonight because we've had so much collegial work with your staff, making sure that we provide a significant product and a significant upgrades. So they've been great to work with, so thank you as well, Natalie, and your staff.
Any other questions, comments?
I'm just echoing the sustainability. Thank you for that.
Sure.
And anybody that can throw Max under the bus in public, I'm all for, so thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, McDonald's is a great anchor store for there, so it's nice to bring that up because Promenade needs to, you know, be brought up a few levels. So that'll be it. Well, no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution carries four zero.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Dwayne. Resolution 63-2020. Patty, would you read the title, please?
Resolution 63-2020, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the Palm Beach Gardens Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, five-year consolidated plan for program years 2020 to 2024, inclusive of the one-year action plan and analysis of impediments to fair housing, providing an effective date for the purposes.
All right, open the hearing. Joanne again, or are we just going to?
So, so Mr. Mayor, we covered everything with Joanne's presentation. So at this point in time, this portion of the presentation was presented, it was the last portion of the presentation, which involved the modification of the five-year plan to direct it toward infrastructure. We're happy to answer any questions that you have at this point in time for this particular public hearing.
I don't know if we will, but we'll do 63, 64, 66 individually, get a vote on them and move on. So, I'm going to close the hearing. A motion and second to approve resolution 63-2020.
Question? I'll make a motion to approve resolution 63-2020.
Do we discuss first, or we approve first? Oh, open it first. I'll, I'll make it, I'll second the motion.
I need a second right now.
I'll second.
Okay. No, now I'm going to close it. Yeah, I'm closing it. Don't get me confused, I'm good. All right, now, now it's discussion. So I'm going to assume there's no discussion on this for anybody?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Just for, for clarification, it's 856, 856,000 for this water septic to sewer conversion, plus the extra fees that are going to add up to the 1.2 for the whole project. That leaves some leftover, you said, to cover the rehabilitation housing program that we have. I know we still have some funds in that program, and we've got 15 houses that we are currently working on. We've got five years on this program. Will we have enough, or will we still get the additional grant money from each year's program to continue to?
Yes, there's enough to cover the 15 homes that Joanne mentioned. So the, the nine applicant, it's, it's from previous, previous fiscal years, and so that's, that is what is funding those 15 homes. So the consolidated plan still provides the option for the single-family rehab, but at this point in time, we anticipate the money to be pivoted away from the single-family rehab toward the infrastructure component. But because it still remains an option in the consolidated, we can update, we update our action plan every year, and so there can always be that idea of doing it. And in the meantime, from the previous funding of the fiscal years, you've got enough for about 15 homes.
So year two, three, four, and five are the one, will we still have the rehabilitation program going on as they're funding for those years?
Basically, over, over the next, you know, depending on the applications and the, and the demand, really starting now, you know, we're taking in applications now from the previous fiscal years. We have enough probably over the next couple of years where those 15 homes will be completed. So we'll probably be tapering off that home, single-family rehab program over the next couple of years.
Plus, we'll be getting 10 as part of the, the other program from the CARES money. There's enough.
Oh, yes, exactly, yes. And then the CARES Act is a whole, completely separate where the additional homes, so additional people will be.
No, we're just making such, such great help for, for people who need it, so I was just checking. Okay, that was mine.
Any other discussion?
So, do we have, I'm sorry, do, do we have 15 applicants in the queue now for previous years, or?
We have nine applicants in the queue, so we have enough funds available for seven brand-new applicants.
Okay, so we haven't received applications yet for the other seven?
There's still funds available for.
And how many times does someone apply that gets denied?
Very rarely. I think we've had maybe one denial. We've had a couple of applications where residents did not respond to our requests for additional information as far as income, so that's happened a couple of times, but very rare.
And these people that apply here have to have 80% or less of AMI? Was that, you said, okay. Okay, so there's seven. Okay, thank you.
Good question. I, I didn't mean to get ahead of you guys. All right, so let's, I'm going to go, we're hearing no further discussion on this, correct? All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Resolution 64-2020. Patty?
Resolution 64-2020, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a substantial amendment to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, program year PY 2019, annual action plan to include CARES Act funding, CDBG-CV, from U.S. Housing and Irma Development HUD, providing an effective date for purposes.
All right, so I'm going to open the hearing. I'm going to assume Natalie's comments for 63 is the same on 64, so I'm going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion and second to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 64.
I'll make a second. And discussion on 64, y'all? Comments, questions? Good on that? Mark?
Yeah, so, again, this is, this is pretty straightforward, and it's a great thing that we can do it. The question was, and I think I asked yesterday, and maybe I forgot to ask, but people in the county, obviously people in the city are, have been and have been able to receive county aid. Do we know how many residents or how many homeowners in the city or renters in the city have received aid?
We did receive statistics on those figures probably at the beginning of October. There were 40 mortgage assistance applications that were received by the county, by residents in Palm Beach Gardens. I believe 36 of those, if I remember correctly, received assist, or were approved for assistance. There were 160 rental assistance applications, and that application process took a lot of time, so they hadn't finished vetting all of those 160 applications, but I believe they had approved around 40 applicants already. So there were around 120 that had not been reviewed at that time.
So the people in the city that may be eligible for the city's grant, CARES Act grant, they obviously can't double-dip and get county funds as well, but do we feel that we're going to be able to, after all of these homeowners and renters are applying to the county, do we feel that we're going to have 40 more people that haven't been able to get county aid to?
Yes, just from, just from the number of responses that we received from our, our survey, over half of the survey respondents, 150 people, would be eligible and hadn't received assistance at that time.
And they haven't received aid because they haven't applied to the counties, or they didn't know about it? Is that?
Various reasons. We didn't directly speak to our survey respondents, but.
Well, well, our.
And I'm also happy to add one thing, excuse me, I'm also happy to add one comment, kind of in line with some, where some of the questions are going on duplication. We did do a little digging on the HUD requirements to see if, because of certain volumes that we collected, that Joanne researched, that received county assistance, we did confirm with HUD that the timeframe, just because you've received county assistance, it doesn't mean that you're necessarily unqualified to receive city assistance if it shows that you've been affected from a different period of time. And as the, as the pandemic continues, and, and if assistance has been granted and it's a finite amount from a previous period of time, we may actually, in fact, have a pool of candidates that may need further assistance down the road. So that's in the HUD regulations. Joanne pulled that today, and so we were able to confirm that. So we, we do believe that there is going to be need based on some of the data that we received from the survey, but just to clarify, just because somebody has received assistance from the county, we will be required to coordinate with the county to ensure that there's no duplication for that time period. But if this continues, and it could continue for a long period of time, we can look at the timeframe in which some of these applicants may be affected, and we can provide assistance.
And these are just outright, yeah, yeah, it does. And these are just outright grants, right? So there's no requirement to people.
That's it, yeah, it's a grant.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Resolution carries four zero. Resolution 66, 66-2020. Patty, would you read the title, please?
Resolution 66-2020, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the workforce housing program and study prepared by Strategic Planning Group and City of Palm Beach Gardens Planning and Zoning Department, providing an effective date for the purposes.
All right, so I'm going to open the hearing. I'm going to assume Natalie's comments from 63 are going to carry over to 66, so I'm going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion and second to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 66-2020.
I'll second.
All right, bring it back for discussion. Any discussion questions on 66, yes?
I think we just need to clarify going forward that this is the beginning of the next steps, so that anyone who's watching, anyone who's concerned, or developers, or people looking for homes, or anyone in the city, this is the beginning of the conversation. It's not tonight that we decide everything.
Exactly.
So that's something I want to make clear at the very beginning, because that's not always understood.
Good point.
I have a question that I missed at agenda review. On page three, Natalie, I, I know our comp plan provides the potential density bonus of three dwelling units per acre for residential high and mixed use. The recommendation as part of the plan for residential density bonuses to be included in all residential land use areas, we're still talking the three units as the limit, except for the TOD where it's six. And then it says additional analysis will be required to ensure those bonuses are in harmony and compatible with the surrounding densities and neighborhoods. Will we have a list in the zoning what those requirements are and what kinds of neighborhoods they can be in and whatnot?
Yes, absolutely. So I think the point that we wanted to, the highlight is that we already have this concept in our comprehensive plan, providing the additional three units, bringing it to the 10. We did it with the TOD, which provide a higher density. We certainly, whenever we, whenever we recommend density, we want to make sure that it's within harmony and the character of the surrounding area, so it's not necessarily a one-size-fits-all, but there may be areas where it might be more appropriate to go beyond three. For example, if it's along the intercoastal, maybe it's still within the city's urban core. We're going to look at all that. It's going to be all laid out in the text amendments for the LDRs, which will all have to be brought in, in ordinance format.
Well, all right. Well, I, I'm just amazed at the work that you guys did and how easy it was to read. When I first saw the, the agenda and I started seeing how long the agenda was and how much there was to read, I kind of cleared my Netflix binging schedule for the weekend and prepared to read, but actually it was a very good read. It was an easy read. It was interesting. Thank you for the consultant for putting the numbers together and, and the program Thank you for the consultant for putting the numbers together and the program together because it really did really spell out exactly what the workforce housing question is all about, and I'm really grateful that we are actually starting. So thank you for your efforts and for all of you guys that wrote all of that. It was really, really well done and very professionally done, so thank you. The part that I'm looking forward to as much as encouraging development and adding a little bit of density in the core of the city for additional workforce housing units really is helping to revitalize and continue to revitalize the city, the older parts of the city. You know, back to Resolution 63 and the consolidated plan, you know, taking some of the older parts of our city and providing infrastructure to improve the quality of those neighborhoods is very important. I look forward to receiving the $5 million from Avenir at the end of next year and the $565,000 from the other project, and maybe more, that we can actually use some of those funds to continue the revitalization and the encouragement of first-time home buyers to, you know, purchase a home in the neighborhoods that are getting older but are still very full of charm and quality, and I look forward to hoping that those funds can be used for those things as much as encouraging the new development as well. So thank you.
You know, I'm glad Mark brought that up because as we rifle through things up here sometimes, we can go pretty quick, but, and I wanted to let Natalie and Joanne know and everybody else, that the work that goes into these, it does not go unnoticed by us. So, you know, as we get involved in every little project, we're more the reading end, but then you give us the presentations, Joanne, and Agenda Review, and you can see this is so well thought out for not just for the distant future of Palm Beach Gardens and the betterment of our community and our plat areas and how important it is, and this isn't put together in a minute. So I thank Mark for bringing that up, and I need to, I say thanks a lot, but on this particular project, it's big for carrying the city into the future, and like Steve said, for the infrastructure of the people that live here, you know, that are going to be involved in our businesses and our corridors. So thank you guys, and.
Carl?
This part looks easy, but the work part really, really took a lot, yeah.
No, I just wanted to say too that along with the TOD that we passed earlier and this, we're really moving into the next phase for the city, and it's exciting to be a part of it and to be able to work with staff, and thank you for, again like Carl said, for all you do to put it together.
All right, so we are going to, I'm sorry.
It's just more accolades, really, just someone who loves to think about transportation, transit-oriented development, and our first office that we ever opened in 1994 was in Lowman's Plaza, and now to watch that become the locus of our connected urban environment where people can live, work, and play all, you know, within that half-mile area and find housing for people like our teachers, our firefighters, our physical therapists, the core of our community, where right now, if you look at the MLS of someone like me as a physical therapist, when we were in office, when we had our office, wanted to buy a house, there wasn't one. So the ability to rent or to buy here in town will be really, really appropriate, and to make that happen while being able to walk outside, hopefully catch a train, and have everything within a half-mile access is pretty extraordinary. I can't wait to watch. Thank you for all your hard work.
All right, so I'm glad we took a minute to do that. Sometimes things move too quick and we are all proud of everybody that works for this city. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion proudly carries four zero, and I'm sure Maria would vote for it too. All right, so we're up to items for council action discussion. Rochelle, I know if you have something to bring up. First off, before we get going, I would like to entertain a motion on the vice mayor position. I can't motion it myself, so can I have a motion on the vice mayor?
Can I make a motion to nominate Rochelle Lit as our vice mayor for the end of this term?
You have a second?
I second that.
Oh, I could have seconded too. I'll do a double second on that. All right, so congratulations, vice mayor. Whoop, need to call the questions? Whoop, all in favor? Seven, anyway, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, carries four zero. Congratulations, Rochelle. Very well done. Okay, so we got some continuation of some board appointments that Maria was on, and if you guys would just hear me out and motion on it, we'll do it. So what we had was North County intergovernmental, and Maria, it was Maria and Lit. So right now, I would like to appoint Rochelle as the appointee, and we don't need an alternate because we're going to have a vacancy filled in March, so I would assume, let's leave that empty. And then on the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency, I would like to make it Chelsea and Woods, and Chelsea will be the appointee on that. Locksahatchee, you're going to have fun. Locksahatchee River Coordination Council, it was Maria, I would like to make that Rochelle, and we will deal with an alternate in April, I would assume. Treasure Coast Planning, Regional Planning Council, oh, never mind, we don't need to do that one. And multi-jurisdictional, Mark and I, you and I do that, so let's leave it as Mark the appointee and Carl as the alternate. You good?
Wait, do they, do they even meet?
I know, I'm changing it.
Traditionally, the mayor is the appointee.
Yeah, but you were on it last year, so I think we were just carrying the ball, but what do you want to do?
When do they meet next?
Who cares? We'll deal with it when we deal with it.
I mean, I, whatever, it's fine. That's probably the easiest one. That and the Locksahatchee River ones are the easiest.
Yeah, right. Well, North Corp. All right, I got to get a motion and second on that, Dwayne. All right, so that's the order if you don't mind, so let's.
You need a motion.
I need a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the changes as put forth by Carl.
I'm going to second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Okay, board's done. Rochelle?
Okay, so earlier in the evening, as part of the consent agenda, we passed a proclamation on Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Also, as part of the discussion on housing, there's a homeless component to the workforce housing. As part of the CBDG funding requirements in the five-year plan, the city has to answer the question, describe the jurisdictions, one-year goals and actions for reducing and ending homelessness in the county. And the answer that the city gives is the City of Palm Beach Gardens will continue to work with and support Palm Beach County's homeless initiatives to help address the housing needs of homeless persons. Last year at this time, I made a request of my fellow council members to ask the city to support the Lewis Luncheon of the Homeless Coalition of Palm Beach County. The Senator Philip D. Lewison opened in 2012. It was the first central access to services for the homeless in Palm Beach County. It's a partnership of the homeless service providers that connect people who are experiencing homelessness with support services and housing to restore them to self-sufficiency. So it goes along with what the general topic has been tonight, and the Lewis Luncheon is planned for May this year. It appears that at this point, we are going to be doing a virtual luncheon again. For full disclosure, I am a board member on the Homeless Coalition, so I will probably abstain from voting and let you guys discuss, decide. Last year, we did an opening door sponsorship of 1,800. They've raised that to 2,500. It provides one month of rent for one family and seats for six guests at the luncheon and a commemorative brick in the Serenity Garden at the center. The next step up would be 3,600, which is two months of rent. So I will leave it to you. I informed Ron that I would be asking you, so if you have any questions for him on the availability of the funding, you can do that too.
Yes, we've been able to identify the $2,500 donation in the budget, that we can make that donation if that's council's wishes, and if you want to check with the attorney, you're not inuring any, you're good to vote.
It doesn't gain nothing personally, Matt.
Yeah, as long as there's nothing that inures to your private pecuniary gain or that of your principal, then you can vote.
There was always some question that might.
Can't hear you.
There was always question as to what I was allowed to ask for as an elected official when requesting funds for the coalition, so it's if you're a say, I'm okay, I'm okay.
I would like to request that we fulfill this request for funding for the Homeless Coalition. Let's do it.
Is that a motion?
Is your microphone on? I'm sorry.
Who, me? Yes, I can talk louder though, very happily. I'd like us to continue this tradition this year, please.
So would you like to make a motion?
How about that? Go with the motion.
I will make a motion that we donate $2,500 from the City of Palm Beach Gardens.
Rochelle's going to second it?
I will second that.
Right on. Mark?
It's fine.
Let's do it. All right, Rochelle?
Wait, wait, after you're done with that, I have one quick thing I want to say. Go ahead.
No, I'm saying, thank you.
Just regarding homelessness and hunger, before we close that out, for anyone looking for things to do, Pie It Forward is happening by Meals on Wheels. For $30, you can purchase a pie or not, but for $30, you can provide a week of hot nutritious meals for a local homebound senior. Project Thanksgiving is being held by United Way and Palm Beach County Food Bank. There are food drives as well as they need help packing food on November 13th. All of this is available on the website, so Pie It Forward is Meals on Wheels, M-O-W PB Pie. Project Thanksgiving from the United Way is at the United Way PBC. And then here in Palm Beach Gardens at Alton Town Center, they're working with adoptive family of Palm Beaches, and they're doing their first Thanksgiving food drive, so any of the businesses in Alton can take your donation of non-perishable food from November 4th to the 14th, and the ARC is also holding food drives. So there's plenty of good out there to be done.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries four zero. City attorney report?
No, sir.
Adjourned.